Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Apex Town Council for Tuesday, November 21st, 2017. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilman Schultz, actually, if you'd like to introduce our invocation guest tonight.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I'm honored to have Father Bill Long from St. Andrews Catholic Church here tonight. He's my pastor, and he's fairly new to the area, so I'd like to welcome him to Apex. He lives right across the street in the villages of Apex, so Father Long, his motto is, his name is long, but his serm is short.
All right.[41.14][41.14](Laughter). Okay, well, thank you for inviting me, and my good friend and prescientor Gene, I guess he's finishing his term, so glad to be here for his last meeting. Let us pray. "Gracious God, we give you thanks for all the blessings you bestow upon us. We give you thanks for these public servants who practice servant leadership, serve our community. We ask you to bless them, direct their actions with your wisdom and with your right judgment and good counsel, so that every word and work of theirs may begin in thee and contribute to the common good. In your name we pray, amen."
Amen. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Father Bill.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to start by welcoming everyone, and as a reminder, just as usual, this is an open public process. We have an agenda that's printed out on the podium outside. If you walked in and missed it, feel free to walk out and get one now. There's no shame in going to get one in the middle of the meeting, I don't mind. Second thing is, this is the public speaking guideline, so if you intend to speak during public forum or during any public hearing tonight, I ask you, you familiarize yourself with this before you do so. The last thing is, in order to be part of the public speaking, there are yellow sheets on the ledge here. You will need to sign your name and your address to the appropriate sheet for the item that you wish to speak on tonight. And if you need to do that, please feel free to walk up and do that now. The clerk will be collecting those in about seven to 10 minutes, and then she'll be bringing them to me, so now's your opportunity to sign in for any public speaking. With that said, I will now move into the time of presentations, and the first item of business is the proclamation for deeming Saturday Small Business Saturday in the town of Apex. Whereas the government of Apex, North Carolina celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 29.6 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.9 percent of American employer firms, create more than two-thirds of the net new jobs, and generate 46 percent of private gross domestic product, as well as 54 percent of all U.S. sales. And whereas small business employs over 50 percent of the working population in the United States, and whereas 89 percent of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses contribute positively to the local economy and the local community by supplying jobs and generating tax revenue, and whereas 87 percent of consumers of the United States agree that small businesses are critical to the overall economic health of the United States, and whereas 93 percent of consumers in the United States agree that it is important for people to support the small businesses that they value in their community, and whereas Apex, North Carolina supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I Lance Olive, Mayor of Apex, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim November 25th, 2017, as Small Business Saturday, and I urge the residents of our community and in communities across our country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. And I've signed this today, Lance Olive, so I'll give this to the town manager, and we'll do the appropriate thing with it, but as I have heard from downtown business folks who are just some of the small businesses, if you shop, they like it when you bring cash rather than a credit card, because that means more of the money stays in this town. Thank you. Presentation number two, we have Keith Joyce of Joyce &amp; Company, an independent auditor, and he has an audit report on the town of Apex. Mr. Joyce?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Happy to be with you again this evening. I know you've got a copy of the bound financial statements. Of course, there's a lot of information there to digest. I'm just going to hit a few of the highlights. If you have questions, I'll be more than happy to try to answer those. Of course, the staff's available for questions as well, and you're always welcome to contact us at any point if you come up with anything. We're going to start out with just some overall issues. The audit opinion was unmodified, a clean opinion. That means everything is fairly stated in your financial statements and no significant deep deviations of any kind. You have sound financial policies and procedures. One thing to note is the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. You received this again for the June 2016 CAFRA. It was the 23rd consecutive year. This year's CAFRA will also be submitted for that reward. Nationwide, about 12 to 15 percent of the municipalities get this in any given year, so it's a pretty good honor to have this for such a long string of time. And as we get into this, you'll see all the numbers have been rounded to the nearest Just some comparisons of the general fund, water, sewer, electric, as far as your cash balances at year-end. You see overall, they went up roughly $10 million from the prior year, and there were increases pretty much across the board. General fund increased from $24 million to $27 million. Other governmental funds, which are your capital projects and special revenues, trust and agency funds, increased from $10 million to $11.9. Water sewer funds increased from $37 million to roughly $43 million, and the electric funds increased from $7.9 to just over $8 million. To look at your general fund in particular, you'll see the total fund balance was roughly $27.8 million. That equals 59 percent of your operating expenditures for fiscal year-end in June 30th, 2017, which is a very good ratio. There are no set percentages that you have to meet, and it varies on the town size. If you were to talk to LGC, anywhere in the 30 to 40 percent range is a very good margin, and you're well ahead of that. The unassigned fund balance at the end of the year, which means your fund balance that is not restricted or committed for any other projects in any way at that time, was $19.377 million, and that's 41 percent of your actual operating expenditures. So once again, a very high percentage. Your current year increase in fund balance was $2,523,000. Your water and sewer fund, current year increase in cash balances of a little over $6 million, which was roughly equivalent to your increase in retained earnings plus your contributed capital. One of the larger numbers in your water and sewer fund was contributed capital, which is composed of water and sewer lines and the easements related to those from developers that are building subdivisions or other improvements in the area. Your current year increase in total net position, $24 million, and of that, once again, is about $18 million in contributed capital. Your current year increase in unrestricted net position was $4,888,000, because that contributed capital is restricted, you can't spend it, so to speak. Your electric fund had a current year increase in cash of $28,000. A current year increase in your net position, which is effectively your fund balance or your retained earnings for a for-profit type business, of $2.1 million, and your current year increase in unrestricted net position is $203,000. And once again, assets, capital assets, come into play in those differentials. Your property taxes, you'll see your assessed value of property taxes was roughly $6 billion at the end of fiscal year 2017. Your total abolumen tax collections were $23 million, which is an increase of $2,300,000 from the prior year. That was a, excuse my notes here, but a roughly 11 percent increase in property taxes receivable from prior year, and you collected 99.9 percent of your levy, which is a very high percentage, and your collections exceeded the budget expectations by a little over $340,000.
Do I interrupt your presentation?
Yes, sir.
What's the average collection percentage?
In Wake County is a much higher collection percentage than statewide. Wake County probably averages around 99.5. Statewide, you're more in the 96, 95 percentage. And all of those percentages have gone up substantially since we went to the vehicle tax and tag systems, where you're paying your property taxes on your vehicles when you view your license plate. They've probably increased statewide 2 to 3 percent at least because of that one change. Your total outstanding debt at the end of the year, about $84.3 million in total. Of that, governmental funds is $24.3 million, the electric fund $3.9, and the water and sewer funds $56.1 million, with the bulk of that being comprised of the wastewater treatment plant that was just completed. There was no current year debt issued this year, and a total of $5.9 million was repaid of the prior outstanding debt balance. Legal debt margin, excuse me, was $457 million at the end of the year. Legal debt net margin is effectively 8 percent of your assessed value. It's a computation that's performed by LGC, but it's not at a level where you would ever want to approach, but this is the differential between where you are and that maximum of the 8 percent value, well, well, under that number. Your findings and responses, you've got a couple of documents or letters from us. The first one I'm going to refer to is just a one-page letter, and it's got three indented paragraphs down below. But as far as findings in the audits, in the audit, we didn't find anything that would be considered a material weakness or significant deficiency. These are the more imposing type items. They are actually listed as part of your CAFRA that is submitted to any bond issuance company, to LGC, for the GFOA awards, so they are disclosed as part of the actual financial statement document. We do have a management letter, which you have there, which are much less insignificant items. Some of these are just simply suggestions, but we have three different things on that management letter. The first of those is purchase orders. We still found some. This has decreased significantly from prior years, but we have some purchase orders that were issued after the date goods were received. We had some obsolete inventory items that we found during testing, which I understand has been cleaned up since year-end already. These were items that just aren't useful anymore, but were still on the books at a value. The amounts of those were very, very minimal as far as the dollar value. And then your construction revenues, we have a construction revenue from proper recording date, June 30th, 2016, that was recorded in fiscal year 2017, and some changes to procedures have been done to take care of that. And what this simply means, there was a receipt that came in June 30th of last year. It didn't get to the bank until the next day, so it got deposited in the wrong fiscal year. It wasn't unmaterialal. Other items, you do have a second letter there that's a two-page item, two-page letter, and this is what we call the governance letter. It's something that's issued directly from the audit firm to the board each year. It's not a part of the audit document itself, but it goes through and basically says there were no problems in performing the audit. We were given all the documents that we needed, so no issues of any kind. The one thing of significance in there is there was a new financial statement standard that was implemented for the current fiscal year. It's called GASB 73, which basically shows the full liability, the full future expected liability for the Leo separation allowance, which is a change from prior standards. That change caused a decrease in the fund balance, or net position, rather, of the governmental funds of $1.8 million, and that's a one-time impact. It's not any cash that went out the door, it's just a matter of you expect to pay more than what you've presented as a liability in the past. Any questions?
Years ago, we had an issue with the New World Software. Can you just confirm if that issue's been cleared up?
It has. There are still some, what I would call, trivial issues with that. I can't remember the name of the account right offhand, but there are some things that, deposits when they're refunded, or checks that can't be refunded because the address has changed, whatever. They also sort of go through a miscellaneous wash account, but the balance in that is pennies on the dollar of what you do in a day's time. It's not anything that we're concerned about, and it's not fluctuated much over time. I mean, eventually, those things get cleared out and more come in, so to speak, but most of the transactions in there are all less than $100.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Joyce?
Can you, before you leave, can you just say 23rd consecutive year one more time for us?
Going for 24.
23rd consecutive year, I think that's something to be proud of, so thanks to the staff for continuing that record.
Thanks.
There he is. Mr. Holler? Yep, yep. Give us a wave.[938.82][938.82](Applause). Thank you, Mr. Joyce.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, at this time, we have our consent agenda. These are items that are generally considered to be non-controversial and enacted with a single motion and a single vote. However, if any council member wishes to pull an item for later discussion, they certainly can do that. At this time, I'll ask if there is a motion.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion on the motion? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously, and we now move to the top of page three, if you're following along on your song sheet. Regular meeting agenda, this is where we set the items that we will be discussing tonight. The only item that needs to be mentioned at this point is that public hearing number five has a special circumstance where we understand there's a likelihood of continuance, so I would like to ask the council that we move public hearing number five to be the first public hearing that we hear tonight. Other than that, no other changes to the agenda.
I would like to propose a closed session before public hearing 06.
All right, that would be fine.
Do you want to move it to before, before that public hearing?
Yes, that would be fine. We'll have that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approved.
All right, and I heard a second, okay. So there's the amended agenda with public hearing number five coming at the beginning of public hearings and a closed session before public hearing number six. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, the motion is passed unanimously, and the agenda is set. We now go to public forum, and the public forum is part of the first regular council meeting of each month, so if you would like to do that, please come to...
This is the second meeting.
Right, so please come to the first regular scheduled meeting of the month.
Come to the podium.
Yes, no, no.[1077.13][1077.13](Laughter). This is the second one.
Public.
We're in sync, we're in sync. So we now move into public hearings, and the first item we address here tonight is (laughing), sorry, that's still funny to me. The first item we address tonight is public hearing number five. My understanding is there is a request to continue this item to January 16th. Is that request being made by the applicant?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you. As such, the applicant is automatically granted a continuance if they wish it. The council, I assume, would be okay with that, so without hopefully much discussion, I'd entertain a motion to continue that item until January the 16th.
That moved.
One second.
All right, we have the motion and the second. Further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that item is continued to the January 16th, which is a regularly scheduled meeting, and it will start at 7:00 PM as usual.
We'll have a public forum too.
And we'll have a public forum then too. Thank you so much. Now we move to public hearing number one. This is a public hearing and possible motion on rezoning number 17, CZ 23, for approximately 14 acres located off of Kelly Road. Presenting tonight, Sarah Rayfield.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm presenting to you tonight rezoning case number 17, CZ 23. Property is located at 1920 and 1928 Kelly Road. Let me orient you with the site. This here is Kelly Road. This is the site. Apex Barbecue Road is down here to the south. Kelly Park is up here, further up there to the northeast. The site is approximately 13.86 acres. It is currently zoned rural residential. The proposed zoning is medium-density residential with conditional zoning. The current 2030 land use map recommends medium-density residential in this area. So again, here is the site. This is the current rural residential zoning. And the requested medium-density conditional zoning. Over here to the north is Beaver Creek Subdivision, currently zoned rural residential. To the south, Kelly Glen Subdivision, zoned medium-density with conditional zoning. To the east, Kelly Grove Subdivision, also zoned medium-density conditional use. And to the west, again, Beaver Creek Subdivision, rural residential. Existing conditions on the site, the property contains multiple structures, including a residential dwelling and several accessory buildings. There is also a small pond on the northwest corner of the property. There's the main structure, and there's the pond. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on August 23rd, 2017. The meeting report is in your packet. The applicant submitted with the application a limitation of uses. The permitted uses submitted with the application include single-family and minor utility. Also submitted were several architectural conditions. You'll find those details in your packet as well. Additional requirements that were, additional conditions that were submitted with the petition include that the maximum density for the overall property shall be limited to no more than two units per acre. Section 1 lots, shown in Exhibit A, approximately 9.6 acres, shall be a minimum of 20,000 square feet, and Section 2 lots, over here, with 4.26 acres, shall be a minimum of 7,000 square feet. The total area of Section 2 is not to exceed 4 and 1/2 acres, as shown. Toad Hollow Trail will be extended into Section 2 and shall end with a cul-de-sac. Another, this here is Toad Hollow Trail. One of the conditions is supposing that this will end in Section 2 with the cul-de-sac, and also that the main roof sections in Section 2 will have a pitched roof at 512 or greater. Planning staff recommends approval of the case with the conditions offered by the applicant, with the exception of proposed Condition 12 regarding street layout. The proposed street layout design is inconsistent with the minimum requirements of the UDO. Analysis, you'll find the analysis statement located in your packet as well. Again, the overall staff recommendation is that the rezoning is reasonable because the proposed medium-density residential district is consistent with the land use classification and map. The proposed rezoning is also reasonable and in the public interest because it will allow residential uses to develop consistent with existing development in the area. Again, the one zoning condition that there was concern about is in regard to connectivity is that as proposed, by ending Toad Hollow Trail in a cul-de-sac, it will not meet the minimum requirements for interconnectivity and street design. When this property develops, it will be required to meet the minimum design standards for streets, including Section 721A4. Interconnectivity states that all areas of a subdivision shall be internally connected by at least one street located within the subdivision. And Section 2 cul-de-sacs, in general, cul-de-sacs shall be avoided unless the design of the subdivision and the existing or proposed street system in the surrounding area indicate that a through street is not essential in the location of the proposed cul-de-sac, or where sensitive environmental areas such as streams, floodplains, and wetlands could be substantially disturbed by making road connections. Because of the street design standards mentioned above, including other reasons to avoid ending in cul-de-sacs, would be because of large vehicles, such as emergency vehicles being able to access the site, as well as school buses. So we do not support staff, planning staff does not support the proposed zoning condition, number 12, limiting the street design in both sections to end in a cul-de-sac. Should town councils choose to approve the rezoning with the conditions as written and submitted, the two separate subdivisions as proposed in Exhibit A will be reviewed as such and will be required to meet all of the development requirements, such as RCA buffers and stormwater management independently of one another. I'll be happy to take any questions. Also, the applicant is here if you should have any questions for them. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Ms. Rayfield?
What will be the total length of the cul-de-sac if they do a cul-de-sac in this, from where it starts? Is it in excess of what we allow typically?
It would still have to meet minimum requirements. It would still have to meet the requirement. There's no exception to that.
Yeah, okay. So it would, it would be within the requirements, of course.
Yes, sir.
So, forgive me, I'm a bit confused. Are you, is staff suggesting that that not be a cul-de-sac?
So essentially, as proposed here, if this street is going to continue and end in a cul-de-sac, there's no proposal for Section 2 to connect to Section 1. So essentially, it becomes two subdivisions.
Okay.
And therefore, would have to be submitted as two subdivisions and reviewed and meet all of the minimum requirements.
So I guess, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused. So if this is approved tonight, then it needs to come through as two different, you guys are going to review it, and I'm not following you.
Because, because of the zoning condition, limiting this road to end in a cul-de-sac rather than for it to continue and connect both Section 2 and Section 1, therefore not meeting that minimum requirement, and therefore having to have separate access into Section 1, and not having the interconnectivity between the two, it's no longer one subdivision, it would be two, and therefore would be subject to all of the development regulations independently of one another. Does that help? What it up?
Yeah, we'll come back to that.
Okay.
That's fine. What are the, you didn't mention the buffers along the outside. Do you want to leave that to the applicant, or?
Sure, the minimum requirement buffers would be a 30-foot Type B undisturbed buffer or a 50-foot AB disturbed buffer along Kelly Road. Internal buffers would be a 10-foot Type B, because of the, these here, the minimum lot size here, along with the minimum, or the existing lot sizes that over here are going to be like, and therefore would have a 10-foot Type B buffer. And same thing along here, because these are larger lots that they're buffering up against, as well as, and these are the larger lots proposed.
Okay, so Kelly Road was a...
It'd be a 30-foot Type B undisturbed buffer.
What was the 50-foot you mentioned?
That would be if it were to be a Type A, Type B disturbed buffer.
Okay, all right. Is the internal property line between Section 2 and Section 1 is what?
Yes, they would have to meet buffer requirements in there, which I believe would be, it would be a 10-foot B, I believe, as well.
And then along the back of Section 1 is a 10-foot?
That's all going to be 10-foot B. These two lots over here are four and 1/2 plus acres, and these two units over here are almost three acres each.
Any other questions for Ms. Rayfield from council?
There's a pond on this property in that one kind of square section. Are they reusing that, or is that...
That would be a question for the applicant.
And we'll get them up here in a second. There's no other, no other questions for Ms. Rayfield.
One, okay. More to answer your, clarifying your previous question, it would be a 20-foot Type B buffer between the two.
All right, thank you, Ms. Rayfield. Let me see if the applicant wishes to come address the council, or the applicant's representative. or the applicant's representative.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Stuart Jones with Jones and Knossen Engineering. Here tonight representing the developer, Joseph Ione, and the property owners. And I want to say thanks to the staff for working with us on this rezoning application. I know it's a little different. Just a quick summary of some of the facts. We are consistent with the 2030 land use map. Planning staff is recommending approval. Planning board unanimously recommended approval, even with condition number twelve. There is an existing public street stub from the Kelly Grove subdivision into this site. There's no roadway access to the west or north to the Beaver Creek subdivision. And the change in lot sizes provides a good transition from Kelly Grove to Beaver Creek. We are trying to create two separate product types. Section one will contain large lots which have twenty thousand square foot minimum lot sizes. And section one homes will most likely be built by custom builders. Section one will contain its own access onto Kelly Road which will end in a cul-de-sac. Section two lots will be similar to the lot and home sizes existing in Kelly Grove. Section two will define the end of Toad Hollow Trail by providing a cul-de-sac end and eliminating through traffic. Although the proposed conditions do not meet the technical parameters of the UDO, we feel that in this case it is the best solution due to low densities and short cul-de-sacs. If condition twelve is not allowed, there will have to be additional public roadway built parallel to Kelly Road. The minimum lot sizes of section one will have to be dramatically reduced to allow for the additional road right-of-way and cost. And there will be cut-through traffic going through Kelly Grove and these properties. We're providing a list of conditions to ensure the architectural character of both sections. The overall density is limited to two units per acre. The total area of section two is capped at four and a half acres. And we've added a new condition that we'd like to present, which would be condition number fourteen. All homes shall provide adequate conduit to allow for the installation of a home solar system. So we've listened to the neighbors and we've worked with staff as we prepared the rezoning application. We've adapted the conditions to best meet the needs of the town and the developer. And we would really like your support on this matter. We had a long conversation at planning board and they were overwhelmingly in favor of this and were in support of condition number twelve. So I'd be glad to answer any questions.
What are the number of lots on the large lot and the small?
Large lot section is probably eight or nine lots. The small lot section is ten to eleven. Talking very low numbers. And your question earlier about the length of that cul-de-sac, it would be less than five hundred feet. Toad Hollow Drive would be less than five hundred feet. And that's the reason for that, that area and where it is. That's why we've got that density capped or that area capped so that, you know, the whole site doesn't develop as small lots.
What's the plan with the pond?
Plan with the pond, it will probably turn into a stormwater pond, which means we'll probably drain it and build it back as a pond and it may be in a different shape or a little different size. But it'll remain in some form.
I personally like the cul-de-sacs. I think that's a good idea. What's the, so the buffer against a twenty foot type B between section two and section one? Between the small lots and the big lots?
Yep.
Think I'd like to see that increased.
Well, that's an, basically an internal buffer. So we feel like those people, it's different than if you've got a new subdivision against an old subdivision. We tried to take care of that by handling, you know, the difference in lot sizes. So that buffer that you're talking about is an internal buffer between new product and new product. They're just different size lots. So we'd like to keep the buffer as is if we can. We tried to provide large lots next to Beaver Creek subdivision, which has the three to five acre lots.
Mr. Jones, I read the staff report about the neighborhood meeting. It seemed that y'all answered all the neighbors' questions and that they did not have a problem with the smaller lots either, that they were satisfied with both, both sections. Is that correct?
Yes, and I think there's some folks from the neighborhood here tonight that would like to speak too. Anything else?
You have the B, ten foot wide B buffer between these lots and the very large lots is what you're proposing?
Yes.
Is the selection of B, is that because there are existing trees there and you cannot do an A? Okay, and I agree with that.
There's a lot of existing tree cover along that property line. We just assume that stays.
Yeah, on the very, in the area.
And on the large lots, the homes will be closer up to the cul-de-sac. So a lot of that rear yard will, will stay. Some of those lots will be over an acre.
I'm sorry?
Some of those large lots will be over an acre.
At least one of them.
At least one. It's an odd shaped piece, so there's going to be some large lots, yeah.
Is that rectangle, that kind of three-sided jet that comes in a part of that other property on the other neighborhood?
Yes, that's part of the Beaver Creek subdivision.
Another thing I read, I just want to question, ask a question about it too, was that clear cutting was not going to happen, especially in the larger lot size. But what about the smaller lots? That will the trees stay there as well? Like, just follow up what they're asking to.
We're not planning on clear cutting. There's not a whole lot of trees there. A lot of that area up on top of the hill is pasture.
Can you talk a little bit more, you talked about maintaining the character with the homes that you plan to do. Can you talk a little bit more about maintaining the beautiful character of the property in itself? You know, along the lines of what we're speaking about, not just trees but just the property itself?
Yes, and some of that will just go to the density itself. If, with the low densities, what you'll find is that on the large lot section with one cul-de-sac in and eight or nine lots, a lot of that area that's around the back of that property will remain as is. So, you know, some of the pasture area may get graded, but a lot of that surrounding area will stay the same. And, you know, that helps, that low density will help preserve some of the character of that property. The existing home unfortunately is going to have to go, but a lot of the character of that, the land especially around the perimeter will, will stay the same.
How long has that house been there?
That house, I don't know a lot about that house. The original part of that house was, is quite old and was historic at some point. But the house has been modified over the years and so the historic preservation folks did not deem it to be contributing to historic property. So it's got some areas in it that are really, have a lot of character, but we're planning on doing a, basically a deconstruction to salvage historic parts out of that.
That was going to be my next question. And I hope that, you know, how I feel about Habitat. If there's some way that could work that out with, when calling in with the salvage. And you are such a big proponent of historic homes. I'm sure that you're going to make sure that that's part of the taking care of too.
Mr. Ione's already talked about who he's going to work with on the deconstruction as part of that.
Well, speaking of Habitat with the different sections, are you proposing that there will be some different price ranges? There'll be some affordability?
Not really promising any affordability. The large lot sections will, of course, command a little bit bigger price tag. And what we'd like to do is keep the smaller lot section in the same price range as the existing subdivision. So it just feels like a continuation of that existing neighborhood. And the neighbors were happy with that. They're not going to see a major change to their neighborhood. They like the idea of the cul-de-sac.
Could you put the aerial view up there one more time if that's possible? Just to see the tree arrangement. There we go, okay.
A lot of the area around the house is pasture.
Yeah, there's, they're just where the pasture goes into that one part that jets out. If you did a B buffer along that, I guess the house is far enough to the east that it doesn't matter. You know, that little square that jumps out obviously is pasture. So that's not something that would be supplemented because there's nothing there.
Right. So, yeah, that one, that type, that ten foot buffer along that property line will all be planted.
And would you expect to plant that to an A-type buffer then if it's, if there's nothing there?
That property owner is actually working with us on some of this project. So they're happy with the B buffer, so we'd really like to leave that as is.
You mean he wants to see his neighbor? He wants to see his neighbor, is what you're saying?
There may be some property exchange in the back, back there.
Okay.
Potentially. But they're happy with what we're doing. They're very excited that, you know, we're having large lots next to their large lots. So the neighbors on that side have not been concerned about buffers at all. As you can see from the back, their backyards, there's pretty heavy vegetation back there.
Yeah, so you see that in their houses kind of to the east.
Their houses are pretty far away. Some of them are very far away.
So Toad, I'm looking at this view here, Toad Hollow, is that the cul-de-sac that's coming up from the south?
Yeah.
That's Toad Hollow. So the cul-de-sac's going to come in past the trees, I'd imagine?
Yep, and it would be probably right out here in this field.
Okay, so all that buffer around there is going to be new and it's a twenty foot B, you said?
Right. So the buffer would be, you know, more in this location. Again, that's internal to the two projects that are going on at the same time.
Yeah, yeah, thinking of small lots, kind of close together, houses versus big lot, bigger house. You know, more buffer, the better, the more separation between the two, you know, better. I think a thirty foot would be good there between those two sections.
Keep in mind that these, these lots are smaller. These are not really small by today's standards. They're seventy foot wide lots.
Seven thousand square feet?
They're seventy foot wide and they're a hundred and twenty feet deep. So they're about nine thousand square feet. So they're not, you know, by today's standards, that's a good sized lot. They just happen to be a lot smaller than twenty thousand.
You have a what, a seven thousand square foot minimum on them? Is that what it is?
As mentioned, seven thousand.
Seven thousand square foot minimum?
Yeah.
So they're seventy by one twenty equals nine thousand, nine thousand square foot minimum?
Well, that's what I was saying, the existing lots are. They're about seventy feet wide. I don't know what their minimum lot size is.
Well, we're just, yours, that you're proposing are seven thousand minimum, right?
Correct.
But you're saying it's, they're going to be bigger lots, seventy by one twenty, which equals nine thousand?
On average, they're going to be a lot more than seven thousand. Again, if it's a cul-de-sac, you'll have cul-de-sac lots and a lot of those lots will be larger than nine thousand square feet.
So why would we have a seven thousand square foot minimum? If they're going to be much bigger than that, what?
Well, we put a minimum in there because you always wind up with a strange lot or something that, you know, there's angles going on here that when you cut a lot in here, you may have a lot that still fits the same type of house, but it may not have all the square footage that you need. That's why we put the minimums a little bit lower and the average would be considerably higher than that.
Was there an average on that section?
No, we didn't put an average in there.
We'll come back to that.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Jones? Alright, thank you, Mr. Jones. With this, I'll open the public hearing. I see I have, Robert Rossi has signed up and it looks like some others marked their names out. So unless I'm mistaken, Mr. Rossi, come on up and you're the only one who will be speaking during the public hearing. And as usual, there's a green, yellow, red light system there. So when you see the yellows, start wrapping up. Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council. I live in, or we live in Beaver Creek subdivision. I'm actually?
I'm sorry, can you state your name and address for the record?
Sure, it's Robert Rossi, seventy-one oh nine Beaver Trail in Apex, part of the Beaver Creek subdivision. We lived there about thirty years now and our property is located just to the west of the pond. And from what we've seen, the owners and the developer and the engineer and everything to do, they've kind of worked with us as far as trying to keep our property the way it looks right now. And we felt they've really done a good job and would really like to see the plan approved as submitted to you tonight. It, we feel it has minimal impact on us. We feel if somebody could come in there and have to abide by some other rules and everything, that the density would be tighter and we were hoping not to have that. And we just feel fortunate to have this type of a subdivision at this time to be up against us. And, and that's really about it. Any questions or anything?
Thank you, Mr. Rossi.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. Not seeing anyone else signed up. And just making sure there's not a mistake, the names that are crossed off, that was intentional? Okay. With that, I'll close the public hearing. For further matter, back to council for discussion leading to a motion.
I, for one, like the larger lot size. I hear a lot of people in Apex, they want to move to a larger sized house. Their family's grown and they had to move out of Apex. Just so, accommodate those kinds of families. And I think sacrificing the cul-de-sac or the, well, street for a cul-de-sac is the wisest thing in this position, in this circumstance.
I'll agree with Mr. Schultz on his comments.
Yeah, I do like the cul-de-sac, that's nice to see. I do like that.
It's great for families.
Yeah. Awesome place to.
I'll weigh in just a little bit. I hesitate on any subdivision that doesn't have something to do with getting non-residential. On the other hand, I'll have to say with this one, we do need some more large lot developments here just simply because when, if we happen to get companies coming in, the managers usually look around to see where they're going to be living or the CEOs. And you really do need this type of development also. I hate to see this piece of property cut up. I think it's a beautiful piece of property. At the same time, it's owned by somebody else and not me. So I'd have to say that overall, I, I think it, it has benefit economic development wise to businesses in here with the large lot. And from that standpoint, I can follow my sword and possibly?
Make a motion?
With a subdivision. Or you want me to physically?
I would.
I was trying to help him finish his.
I, I would like to say that I think this is a, it's a nice change to see. I do like the cul-de-sacs. I personally live down cul-de-sacs. I love it. The kids, I think it's a great area for kids to, to play and have fun. I am a, I would like to see, I would like to ask for a couple of things. I would like to ask for a thirty foot type B buffer between section two and section one. And I'd like to see a minimum of eight thousand square feet as opposed to seven thousand, which shouldn't be a problem if we're talking seventy foot wide lots. But that's up to you guys to decide.
We could agree to do the 8,000 square foot minimum lots. Still feel like the buffer is, needs to stay.
I tend to agree with that too, because, I mean, they're new developments, so each property owner, when they buy, knows exactly what they're getting when they get it. It's not like we're forcing this on somebody, so.
Mr. Jones, just before you leave, can we get clarification? This is condition, we can call it number 15, if that's okay?
Well, it would change...
Oh, modify?
Would modify an existing condition.
Okay, and can you state it again, please? 8,000?
Right. So condition number 10?
10, right.
So section two lots shall be a minimum of 7,000, so we're gonna revise that to 8,000 square feet.
All right.
For section two lots.
Thank you for that clarification. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve? Any discussion on the motion?
This is approving with the cul-de-sac.
Oh, yeah, let's clarify that. So with condition number 12 as written, as submitted by the applicant?
Right.
That was your motion?
Yes, as submitted by the applicant.
And your, and your second?
Correct.
Okay. And with condition number 14 as offered by the applicant? Which was the adequate conduit for the home solar system?
That's fine.
Okay.
And, okay.
All right, so...
And then lastly, they changed to seven, which is from going from 7,000 square feet to 8,000.
All right, so that would be the modification to condition number 10? Okay, so we both, we got motion and second, all agreement there? Any discussion on the motion? Or any clarification needed? Thanks. Not hearing any further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
All right, the motion carries by a vote of four to one with those conditions. And we will now move on to public hearing number two. Thank you very much. Public hearing number two. This is a public hearing, possible motion for ordinance on that question of annexation. This is for the intent to annex Westford WEH PUD. And that is approximately 100 acres. Presenting that tonight is our planning director, Diane Ken. Come on down.
All right, so to orient you to the site, this is US 64, this is Jenks Road, this is the Abington subdivision. And this property has been approved for the Westford PUD. And you'll be hearing about a subdivision associated with this PUD later tonight, but they are proposing to annex the entirety of the area that is under control from the current developer. There is one parcel that was not included in the current PUD area, and so that is not being annexed at this time.
Can we pause for one second?
Sure.
I think we need to angle the mic more towards your...
There's a mic here, is it not?
Folks in the back of the room are having a hard time hearing. That's my indication. We can check the volume? Yeah.
Okay. So it is part of the Westford PUD and the Westford PUD did include...
Well, sorry, can we get the mic aiming towards you? Wherever you wanna stand, we just need you to talk to the mic. Thanks.
Very difficult to do without a pointer or something, but, okay. The little piece that's far to the right that I cannot point at is part...
Sorry.
That one right there, it's gonna disappear.
I mean, you can bring the mouse to you.
All right.
There we go.
So, thanks. So that piece right there is not part of the current PUD, so it is not being annexed, but the remainder of the PUD is requested to be annexed. Staff does recommend approval.
Questions for Diane?
What is the connectivity of the PUD, one that's not being annexed?
They will have to rezone at a later time. They will not be able to meet the PUD conditions. This has already been rezoned out of the PUD, the section that's shown. There was an original PUD. It was rezoned by a second owner. This outline here is the current PUD. The remainder piece will have to be rezoned at a later time by that owner when they want to go to develop it, because it's no longer part of the Westford PUD. They cannot meet the conditions from the original on their own. Any other questions for me?
All right, thank you, Diane. Is an applicant here or representative of the applicant that wish to speak? All right, not seeing that, I'll open the public hearing and no one signed up to speak, so we'll close the public hearing. Refer the matter back to council for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Discussion on the motion?
It's a, it's a better situation than we had a long time ago, that I will say.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. We now move to public hearing number three. This is possible motion for annexation for Crossroads Holding LLC. Diane Ken presenting.
All right, to orient you to the site, this is North Salem Street, this is US 64, this is the property that was previously rezoned for Crossroads Ford. They are requesting annexation in order to get public water and sewer, to get their construction plan signed. Staff does recommend approval.
Questions? All right, no questions. I'll open the public hearing. If no one has signed up, then we'll close the public hearing. Refer the matter back to council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve? Any discussion on the motion?
I do not like the car dealership at this corner, however, I understand where we're at in the process. But I've made that pretty clear in previous public hearings about this.
I think we're all pretty well in accordance with that.
Yeah, same for me.
This was rezoned some time ago. And once you've done your rezoning, as we all know, the wheels turn, so.
All right, having heard from everybody, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. We now move to public hearing number four. This is annexation for Western Wake Ventures, also known as Deer Creek Area 3. Diane Ken.
All right, so this one is part of the Deer Creek PUD and they actually annexed the entirety of their project after their subdivision was approved, but then they were required to add a turn lane on New Hill Olive Chapel Road, and so this annexation is to get that annexed in. Staff does recommend approval.
All right, questions for Diane? All right, thank you. Is there an applicant? Who wishes to speak? Okay. I'll open the public hearing. No one has signed up, so I will close the public hearing and now refer the matter back to council for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. And public hearing number five has already been handled, so we will now move to the next item, which was our motion to go into closed session to take advice from an attorney.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, we're going into closed session to take advice from an attorney.